All right, welcome everyone to our March meeting, our work session. First up on the agenda is a fire company recap of 2024. Welcome to our chief Bill.
Thank you. I did send out a recap of our coded calls. For the year, we answered 293 calls. These coded calls, that's a National Fire Incident Reporting System or NIFRS. And we entered that into a database. It's reported to the state and to the feds. We do it monthly. Actually, we do it by call, so they're all, they're already counted. They want to keep them up to date. If you look at on the codes on the left-hand side, 730 through 746, that's our fire alarm systems that accounted for 20% of our calls in the calendar year. The other one to take note of is 611, which is dispatch and canceled en route. That's 25% of our calls. And just to explain that, alarm comes in, the dispatch, and they dispatch us and before we either get out of the station or call. Alarm company called proper code. You question the answer. Or if we're on mutual aid call, we may be partway down the road and whoever we're mutual aid with, they'll say they're holding the call to their company. So it's a dispatch and cancel. You know, so it takes up a lot and those come in all hours at the end. The very bottom ones, 800 through 813, those are weather related. We probably didn't get one tonight. We had quite a few of those and in that, there may be some that in code 444, it could be tied to weather, which is power lines down. But that's kind of the recap of the calls. We only had one, I'm sorry, two building fires within our, our bar limits. Seven building fires, five of them were mutual aid calls of the system. And it just sent the pie graph to show the breakdown how they, how they sort them. The other one I sent was about mutual aid. We have mutual aid, herbal mutual aid agreements with the High Township and Campbell, Marshall, Wexford, Economy and Bell Acres. And this is a recap of the 293 calls. We had none, no, no mutual aid on 233 calls in the balance of the 60 calls where some type of mutual aid, either mutual aid given, mutual aid received. John Parks always keeps a pretty good track of man hours, volunteer man hours that we use in that one, that last document. Luke told me we're probably about 80, 85% accurate. There's probably more hours that need reported.
Yeah, it's definitely under reports.
Yeah. And that's quite a few hours on this stuff. Round, round number total hour is 6,600 hours for, for all of us. Just some highlights fundraising for 2024. It's the same sad story as last year. We mailed out 5,783 requests for donations on the first mailing and 5,145 on the second mailing and received a total of 954 responses back or 16 and a half percent of the households responded. The dollar amount was around $107,000. We got one very good donation from a, a resident. He put that donation, isn't for general funds, it's earmarked for emergency equipment purchase that anything that we needed, we're, we're able to purchase with it. And that was a $50,000 donation from one, one resident.
Is that in the 107? That's an addition.
Yeah, it's an addition. But that's a little special fund because in his donation on the check, it's for emergency equipment only.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. I was in a social thing last night. Talking, there was, I was talking to another resident right there. We go, wow. She, somehow we got talking about donations and that. She said, she says, you know, I give to some things and like, I finally, she searched, and she really liked. We, we have great respect for one of those really, really, she's an engineer, really intelligent woman. And I ended up giving down, down to telling her that I think the most important thing for the borough, being a borough resident, she's actually, I remember here on Bellwood, I said is that the fire company, you got the annual. And she was in tune that I think every resident in the bottom makes a priority if you have a little bit of, you know, because I know that she said, why do you say that? I said, do I know that the money is being spent properly, being spent wisely? I said, the equipment costs are astronomical for both of those groups. The cheap belt on is where the face for it loads and parts like that. It go, wow, you need to buy a feeder built over the road cab for what you spend, I spent one ambulance.
Yeah, I mean, the cost of, the cost of stuff, our one engine for state inspection in November needed four tires. And a year ago, I think I reported to you, they had gone up 35% from 23 to 24, when I did, or I'm sorry, from 22 to 23, I gave four more tires because the PAM for this year's inspection and they went up another 40%. So, and PAMs on the trucks, trucks, they've gone up 40 and 50%. So we're, we're, just to keep our equipment up, we're spending a lot of money that we need, we need to make us comfortable. We probably need at, at 107,000, we need to be close to about 200,000 from the residents.
Let's pass word around everybody that's a resident. No, I mean seriously, I try to, try to talk, talk to your neighbor, do it if you, if you, if you have that chance for that conversation.
We welcomed four new members in 2024, one of them being a junior who was just added to the rolls in December. And he's actually a fifth generation member. And he's going to start, he's going to start his essential to firefighting in the spring. We also have three, currently have three members finishing up their mod four, which will make them interior firefighters also have have one member. He's my neighbor. He works out of town. He comes home on the weekends. And he started, I think, just last week. He comes home on Friday night. He goes to a class at the academy all day Saturday. And this past Saturday, he don't, week before, the first week, he didn't leave till Sunday. But he finished the class up Saturday and left at 7:30 to go back to Columbus for his job. That's the kind of dedication we're getting from members that, that want to get training and help out. We took, we took delivery of our new rescue engine finally in 20, on December 5th, 2024. That was a three and a half year odyssey. We placed it in service in record time. It ran its first call, I believe, January 2nd during a little bit of a snowstorm and a for a vehicle accident on Wexford Run Road. Looking forward, not only from this year, but for the next few years, Fire Company has to plan to replace their 2,000 Sutland 75 foot aerial. The lead time right now from I'm getting from all the different manufacturers and it is anywhere from three to five years to, to purchase one. They just don't build those and sit them on a lot. They're built, built to order. And right now to replace that truck, the way it sits and be in the same manufacturer would be 1.9 to 2.2 million. And just the reason it's 24 years old and the latter inspections keep getting more intense. And the cost of that's gone up and the maintenance on it is, is a lot more than just a pumper. Yeah, we bought it, we bought it from a high township. We've got a, we've got a deal on it. It's serviced, serviced well. I get it inspected every year. So it's safe for, for firefighters that have to go up it and try to get on a roof or put out a fire or whatever. So, and that's, that's getting costly. It's starting to nickel and thon us. Last thing I have, or not the last thing, I got one out of it. About radio communications. I reported last year, my February, where outgoing county executive had signed a $80.5 million contract in December for Motorola Solutions to do a build out of the emergency radio system. And it was supposed to be a five to seven year rollout project. And also in the county executive, Emma Rotto, in her 2025 budget, put $18.5 million in for radio system upgrades. So that's nearly $100 million. What's frustrating is the only thing ACES Chief Brown will say is when the program's done, 98% of the, of the county will be covered. That doesn't mean 98% of Franklin Park will be covered for emergency radios communications. Because we don't, everything's proprietary information. They won't pass out any information. I asked, are we, you're going to put any more repeaters in the north zone? Can't divulge that information. Well, it's a county contract paid for by county tax dollars, but they say it's proprietary information. So we're still going to be stuck with our marginal coverage where we have four coverage, Dixon Creek, Camp Meeting Road, I-79, I-279 and, and other places off the top of my head. Those are the major ones I can think of. Last thing I have is, oh, Gary got this. PennDOT's going to release the construction to start on the 9/10/79. August 21st, it's going to be released to construction. But what they said in the release I got that probably anything will start until December or January.
I didn't see any email where it had come through.
I, I got, for some reason, got that. It showed up August 21st to be released for construction, but not going to start until December or January. That's the energy project. And it said, no, no, they don't anticipate any traffic restrictions until late 20, mid 26 to late 26, any traffic restrictions. That's really all I have. Anybody want any questions for, for me?
You said there's only two fires in the year that were actually fires within Franklin Park?
Building fires. We had, we had other fires.
Gotcha. That's pretty incredible. Or is that on, kind of on average?
Yeah, we're pretty safe. Franklin Park's pretty safe.
Are we, that puts us on par with other municipalities around us?
I really don't know. I don't have access to their statistics. You know, I know McCale's has quite a few structure bars. High Township, Wexford has quite a few structured bars.
Yeah. You know, we're a little more spread out than.
Now, I can't say my first year as chief, we had, we had six actual structure fires in the bar and all six of them caused extensive damage.
Those two structures were pretty, pretty preventable.
Who is that? The fire marshal? My policy is if I was made chief, any, any, any structure bar, it probably any kind of damage, I call the county fire marshal. They have the expertise. They document everything. I personally, the one was a little electrical problem. I don't know if that was for one of the, the other one was accidental.
Yeah, I understand like residents, a lot of first time homeowners. Sometimes you hear that annoying noise. Is there like outreach or education the department does to like change your batteries, check your charger? And then the borough, we did help them.
We should, we, I believe we put it on our website last year. We input on for this time change, about changing batteries. Just one of recent calls I had, it was on Strummer, this gentleman had trouble. It was a new house. So his detectors were new. They weren't like cyclers and, and he said something about, I shut the power off, but they were still going off. There's something about battery voltage. He said, oh, like you said, new homeowner. We suggest you change your batteries. It's a time change. He said, well, it's coming up. I'll take care of it. So I counted up the batteries for him and showed them how they come on.
Is there a, is there a blood scan for detectors? I know carbon dioxide is like 10 years.
Mud detectors are 10 years.
10 years.
The new, the new UL and what NFPA adopted is some of the new ones are gauking. So, and they have a lithium power cell in, they can pull a little tape to activate it. It starts a clock. So when that counts, it goes to 10 years. It starts talking to end of life cycle, time to replace or something like that. End of life cycle. But the one, one I was just on recently, Settler's Walk fire alarm, they're going off everywhere. I, I finally took them, found one. Turned it over. It was today. One of the first. I said, these are expired. I, she said, can you take them all down? I did. I took them all down. She said, how can I put them back? They were hardwired and had battery back. So you just there's, it's an industry standard, no matter who you buy. I said, just plug it right back in, put your battery in and just. She was, she was a single person. I think she was one of the ones that does, does everything for herself. She said, I'll take care of it.
Is there any, like, volunteer opportunity for the young people, like a college student or a high school student? You can provide them internet. Some young kids and they wonder, can some students or whatever, you know?
They can, they can join as a junior member at age 16. From 16 to, to they turn 18, they're juniors. They can go for training and, and learn, learn everything all the way up to now the state law passed. They can do the structural burn, what we call the mod four. But then when they turn 18 to get their certificate that they're interior firefighter. But during their training, they can volunteer. They can come down, they can run. We'll do some in-house training with them and they can dominate and help. Be, be kind of, hate, hate to use the term, they can be a gopher. Gopher this, gopher that, you know, we, it helps the firefighters out because we don't have to leave to run back to the truck to get something. They'll get me this.
So do they even contact you or just like go to the website and apply for that?
Yeah, they, they, we, we have an application online on our website. And we suggested they come to the fire station on Thursday evenings from seven, we're there from seven to nine. If they're under 18, they need to bring a parent with them.
So you have that program going? Have you got some juniors coming up like in the past?
Oh, yeah, we, we, our, most of our juniors have graduated to, they've, they've turned 18 and they have, have almost all their training. So we, right now, we have one junior, one junior just sworn in.
Have you done with the, those dorms that the, you know, top of the fire? So are those coming in handy at all for first college students?
It's still. Had some heads banging together over it, you know, I think it's going to be tried to start up again. Maybe not for the live-in program, but maybe for what we call staffing. Do what, what Marshall does. Marshall has staffing and Wexford has staffing. And, but they're giving their, your staffing people a stipend of $20 a shift for $20 a call. You know, the only thing we would have to figure out is how to fund it. They're funding off a grant. When that grant goes away, they're not going to be able to do that.
You know, it's true.
It's the Allegheny County Farmers Association, Safer Grant, oh, Safer. I thought I got something, but that's hard to manage that grant. There's all kind of, there's all kind of crazy. On the out, from the Allegheny County Firefighters one? The, the Safer Grant. Oh, Safer, yeah, I, I, I believe it's hard to manage because there's, you know, turnout requirements and all that stuff. And you can have a lot of expense for that. So you have to maintain a certain amount of people and it's a problem. Unless you're running, you know, the Ozzy Falls. The live-in program for us compared to like the ones that have it, Wexford and we don't have enough calls. You know, they might, they might, we might go two weeks, three weeks without a call. And they're going to, we're going to be giving them duties at the station to do and they're not going to be running any calls. They're going to get tired of going somewhere else. So that's one, one of the bad things about it. We were running four, four or 500 calls. Might, might work out.
You don't want a QRS, you can do that.
More training certifications.
Hey chief, how many calls take it down to 79?
I'd have to run another reporter on that. I'm not sure on location, but a few. I would say, I would say in bad, usually bad weather, we're there once, twice a day. You know, or something like, but we get on here quite a bit.
How do you feel about that? I feel nervous. I'm just worried about you guys down there.
Yes. Nobody moves over and nobody slows down.
Yeah. I didn't protect with that you can't, I guess you just deal with it, right?
Even the, even the troopers, one trooper was, nobody slows down, not even for me.
Have you guys chased down the idea of building insurance companies for the wrecks? Is that going any further?
We're probably going to do that here very shortly, I hope. Bill at least for consumables and use of the, the truck and the, and the rescue tools if we have to use them.
We talked about that, I remember maybe even last year.
We're all set, we're all set to go. It's we have to pull the trigger from the executive side.
Of course, everything you do is dangerous. 79 is something like the traffic situation. You know, but just thank you for, just thank you for all you do, all of you. Very much appreciate that.
Yesterday was a long day. I was up, I got up at four o'clock because some little thing went off on, on the, it was up. Midnight last night.
That's quite amazing what you, what, what you do. Thank you.
And I'd like to say with the way the wind's blowing, I'm sure my phone's going to go off anytime there's going to be a, a tree down somewhere with power lines down. The last, the last rainstorm we had, and it was a little bit of wind, we had a tree come down and completely crush a house on McIlroy Road and trap, and trap a 88-year-old woman. And she came out, she come out through the window. She said, just hold that ladder. I'm coming up. 88 years old. Because she couldn't come out any other way, the way the tree, the tree cut the house in half. The, the access to the stairwell was, was gone. Couldn't come out the front, the front. Then we had to go up, we had to go look for our daughter, founder, founder of. Are you able to say who the fifth generation is that's coming on? But you can guess. Luke Merriman.
Thanks for coming out.
Okay. Just keep supporting us. When you get your invitation for our, our annual banquet, try to come and have socialize with us. What's the date on that? April 26th. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue on the agenda. All business there as not. New business, let's see, review the agenda.
Got to run back one page, just to keep it that way. Probably not, no public hearings scheduled. We do have a number of purchases and we did have the recommendation from the planning commission on the Terra slash Cardinal Ridge and some of those small changes as a result of the ordinance revisions. So they have reapproval, well, not actually reapproval, a grant of the revised final approval motion five. They have been provided with a development agreement and they've done a construction cost estimate back in December or so. I think this will change. Because these are mostly designs of the structures and on the road for others. I do know in terms of that development, they might give an update or Sean as well, but they did have their MDDS permit from Allegheny County Conservation District. Time has gone by, technically expired, but we got an email from County Conservation District saying, well, we're backed up. We're pretty much saying everybody's extended and we'll get to them eventually. So we'll see what happens. Respect the moving dirt and.
Question on that, maybe Tim can, there's like, we did get some, some of the sketches and drawings in our packet. It looks like they're going up because it slides on everyone to make the backyard to bury the garage.
Well, you're going to have to do something because they have to blow it.
It does say that in this report that, that those levels must be something more below that.
I think that, that's, you know, that's the way our ordinance is, is written and, and, you know, if that hasn't turned out that way, then why can't they should lock the concealment?
It just, it just seems to me like when I'm driving down the street and I see the garage, the front door and the two stories, and then between, at the end of each unit, I see a hillside going up. It looks like everything's going to be, I think I'll feel like the whole development's in a bowl. So they can, I don't know, just, just, I'm just trying to think in 3D when I look at that. That wasn't what, that wasn't what it was going to look like before we changed.
Well, we didn't get down, get down to that much minutia and when we originally approved it. And things have changed, so.
There was a drawing where they only had two levels too. Are they doing some each way again, do you know?
Honestly, I'm so confused with this all at this point. I know that, that we've, you know, scoured everything. Planning commission went over it all. I, I picked out all the sections that they possibly could have, you know, complied with or nothing in the, in the play with and, and they seem to have needed planning commission happy with the decision. So I don't know how it was proposed to be constructed, but I, I didn't, I didn't want to get involved with the the design because, you know, with my eye.
the design because, you know, what my eye may wanna see isn't what somebody else's, I don't see it. I don't know what it comes to, while with the planning commission, I just kinda laid it out for them and they seem to be, seem to be happy with it, so. What we're gonna get out of this is gonna be a little different from what, you know, we have originally specified in our ordinance, so.
Usually they have a somebody, they don't necessarily have to give a presentation or otherwise, I don't know if it'd be the developer or engineer, but.
I'm assuming there's gonna be somebody.
So like Colonel, Colonel Rigs has had like the developer, the attorney, and they had environmental engineer.
You haven't mentioned that you won't build. Things don't go the way they should, like, is there like, we have an engineer on site or something, there's like checks before they start spending all that money on building on that, that bottom, you know, that's somewhat submerged or what?
Well, the, the grade is, the grade is what it ends up to be, um, you know, that you can, you can massage your grades by bringing in dirt or removing dirt, um. You know, I, I was, the way I work in streets, you know, is, is specific and that's why I wanted to make sure that they were aware of and so they couldn't say, well, I didn't know that, or, you know, this doesn't make sense or whatever, so I hit them every way I can with that specific requirement.
Yeah, I get that, I get that, and the question is, are, are we gonna be in a situation where they're gonna be begging for forgiveness or asking?
They quite possibly could, because, you know, I mean, I.
We don't have somebody on site to check, like, at the very beginning.
Well, that, it'll change, at the, at the very beginning, it probably won't be in compliance and that's, that all um, comes to fruition through the, the finish. Landscape and things.
Yeah, always right, the renderings don't show it at all.
You know, the renderings don't show the slides, sort of, along the, the colored photos and stuff, one of the drawings.
Yeah, and well, the, the problem is, this is, this is gonna struggle and, and, you know, I I'm not completely satisfied with what I've drawn, but the planning commission seems to be, so, um. Yeah, yeah, um, you know, so i- i- it's hard to you know, i- i- it's hard to specify design, I mean, th- these, everybody builds out of the same box, you know, and it's a, it's a rectangular building, pretty much no matter what it is, as far as a townhouse building, it's the same thing, you know, very, very little proof while on the sides, little bit more in the rear and the fronts are beautiful. And, you know, our ordinance really doesn't push to that, but um, to the extent that, that, um, that they, they've provided the information, planning commission, so doesn't have to make a decision. Well, th- th- they weren't, they didn't give good quality drawings for the buildings, they, there were, it was piece-milled at best, and they were just trying to patch the holes wherever there was a leak.
Yes, well, I don't get, it's like, this one only shows the garage in one floor.
Right.
This one shows the garage in two floors.
I mean, the, the, the problem in here is you have the developer who's wants to develop. He's really concerned about what he's, what's the builder's gonna be developing, he just wants to be able to sell the work to the builder and be able to do it at a proper price range, so. You know, and, and the builder, you know, has a drawer where he pulls these things out of and nothing really changes on them. You know, it's easy to tell you what materials he's using and say, yeah, well, this isn't final, this is, you know, party board or whatever. But, you know. It's not, it, it's just, I didn't get a lot of good, good quality documentation.
Just wanna ask the concern about the fifty percent theory in the basement, that's, that's the concern, maybe. The page number's on here, but there's two pages with colored rendering.
Yeah, and if you look twenty-five, it does show the, the left side elevation, the rear elevation.
It's twenty-five, the one with the uh, real, the two.
No, it's, it's this one. It does show.
I, I saw that. Yeah.
That's the only place that it's correct at all, but the renderings.
Yeah, the first rendering, uh, it looks like it's, it is two level.
Yeah.
That one's gonna be.
That'd be just two plus A.
Yeah, there's, yeah, probably in the back, it is, it is built, it'd be, and for the second run range. Yeah, I'm not seeing that in the back.
And I, and I didn't try to cross-reference, maybe there's some notes on the plans here that the one, those that, they, they build some of each height. It just seemed very convoluted when I tried to, you get out and spend ten, fifteen minutes trying to scratch my head about it, but it sure would seem.
Then they're coming up with, well, some of these buildings are gonna have and this will all be driven by sales of each unit, are gonna have sunrooms, okay, so what they're doing is they're giving me a rectangle for each, each unit, so it may not be that big and probably won't be in under any conditions because sunroom will probably, will probably be less, um, of dimension in width of each unit, because like, they have to make that big because they don't want the sunrooms, they want the right of it or the left of it. It all depend on the orientation of the building that gets built, so they've kinda, you know, given us a, a plan saying, you know, here, here's what it's gonna be, but subject to change, in other words, it's a big footprint, it's not gonna quite be that big.
Yeah, remember the sunroom ago?
In the back.
In the back?
In the back. It'll be a one-story is what they, what they said for planning commission. And we didn't get any detail on it.
Like a, like a bum down now?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a room, it'll, whatever we hear, some of it could be decked, some of it can be covered, or some of it could be enclosed on.
But it does, it's not as taller structures. That'd be a mound, right?
Well, it, it, so what you're looking at in the front, you'll have, you'll have a walkout garage door level. In the back, you'll have a walkout of, of the first floor, so that, that's where the sunroom deck at grade, post degree. Probably fortunate being.
I guess what this boils down to is how do we avoid getting in a situation where, once either built, they're not in compliance? And that is, I don't have the answer to that right now, but that's what we need to think about before we go to a purchase.
Get more detail, get specifics.
What, what do you, typically, so we typically get more detail as you give them the permitting process?
Well, they'll, they'll give me exactly what they're gonna build when it comes to that. But at that time, you know, this, you're not gonna be able to scrutinize that because it'll already be approved, they'll be lost there and the footprint will be there for the units. So this is gonna be recorded so they can get started in order to, to grade the property, to, to do, do their work on the property. It's also gonna be re-recorded once those units are built in that townhouse. Because they, they're gonna need to zero the, the party lines in on the property boundary. So, you know, if it's off a quarter of an inch or even an inch, that could put somebody, or somebody learning in the next unit, so they have to re-record it. So each building will be re-recorded separately, and that's what we've pretty much typically done on, on all the townhouses.
We will have, I mean, Jones group, because it's public infrastructure on the road or the, you know, out there for, for those parts. Um, I don't know if they would do the grading as part of that before they hand over.
The finished grade, well, the finished grade will definitely, will definitely separate the, you know, the fifty percent from the non-fifty percent, so.
So they'll, and now, if we can go, we double check, I mean, when they had done the calculation originally, I don't know if they had all the earthwork and the final grading, now it's changed, so it might be worth looking back so that we can hold funds that if, you know, they say, well, we walked away, well, no, we've got who knows what that is, a hundred thousand dollars worth of, of bonded improvements for you to do the grading in the back or be cut, be hired somebody.
And as long, that's gonna be pushing for engineers, how specific and how precise they are with their, with their grading.
And then we can recall these.
But I mean, that wasn't matched up to, you know, foundation expeditions either, so this is all gonna have to be adjusted in the field, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how to set up, set elevations perfectly for, for that type of thing. Um, and so we might have, you know, the possibility that we're coming back to designing, maybe we're through a league.
And the funny, I know, and the application, and if my memory is right, and the engineer of work, I did something that we agreed in that.
The other concern that I had when we were there is each one of those units are gonna have down scouts and, and rain conductors. And we ran this with other, um, um, townhouse units, so, um, I asked that they show private easements that go across each lot. When it was under, one interstate, it wasn't a big deal, that they're gonna have that private easement for for, um, stormwater to get to the, the public stormwater system. And if, if they have to build something over that or relocate it or do something, it's gonna approach in that, it becomes a problem because um, you know, unit, unit A may be wanting to do something, and unit C may say, I'm not proving anything for anybody, it's not going through my yard, you're not I, I'm not gonna sign off on any improvement. So, you know, what they're gonna do is, once everything is laid out and they know what they're gonna build in all these units, they're then with the final recording of the building, they're gonna add those easements, and that was a condition um, that was put on the drawings that, that were approved and that's not.
Are they still finding them in the back storage for the stormwater and all these?
That, that's where it's all gonna go, yeah, but getting it there is the and since they didn't know what, what they were gonna be putting on the backs of buildings, um, as far as sunrooms and decks and things like that. For the sizes, they didn't wanna show those.
Their plan complete, but it sounded there's a lot of, yes, I mean.
There, there, there's, there, there, there's a lot of adjustment there and, and I mean, you know, we, we're changing gears here on, on the whole concept of what is bringing, so. A lot more detail, we had to roll over and the problem is, is between the developer and the, the builder, I think they were like this and not wanting to help each other out and fight amongst each other and we're just getting bits and pieces to, to make it move forward.
Tim, where are we on the ninety-day submission in first planning commission, you usually have that in your staff report. And front of you, but we. Dave, they got pulled the first time.
I think we're okay until, until April, April twentieth or something, that's, yeah. But it's my staff report giving.
They're at planning mission twice. April twentieth? Match with our, uh, public meeting in April? Yeah, I think, uh, just looking, I think it's the sixteenth or something. So, yes, so in terms of, you know, deemed approval or a forced to vote, uh, at the March meeting, now you've got in the system for the ninety days without even asking for an extension of time, potential for a continuance or a tabling until
I feel like this is too many questions to, to go on it. Unless we have more information, but I don't.
I don't think we're, I'm not expecting to get any more.
It's, it's a lot, I'm not, for sure.
Yeah, you're not expecting to get any more information at all, meaning?
Not from them, um, a- and, and I, I think one of the problems is we have a rather planning commission group now and they're not under the understanding that we want all our eyes to be on these guys.
Yeah, so we're not having to deal with them in the back way.
And, and this, and again, we're dealing with multi-family dwellings, so there's a lot of, you know, my idea of what should be done is maybe, maybe different than what everybody else thinks. I know it was said that, you know, well, you know, this, this is better than what we had, so the sides of these look good. Because what the ordinance says, there should be as much interest on the front as there is, who a building is on, on the sides and on the rear as there is in the front. I didn't see that, but since this whole thing is better, just the planning commission, people thought it was fine, so, I mean. Their discretion, your discretion.
There's five distinct buildings here, it's almost like four, five or six units in them. And you're saying that based on some of the renderings, we could have some that are only the two floors. You know, the other ones would be the basement, it would be underground, they could have two more above it.
Ev- every, everything, everything should, should have walkout basement toes in the front, if you will. That'll be the entry, and the rear should be a walkout first floor, so that's the way all the buildings should, should lay, and I I just, I don't think that the, the grading plans like that, but.
Well, if they should, as in, via ordinance, or should, as in?
That's why it's specified to need to be fifty percent.
Right.
They're, they're assuring me that that's what it's gonna be.
Did they say anything about these, they're only two level or?
No, we, 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 we talked about, you know, a, uh, finished attic and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, I don't know, they just.
That one you're looking at doesn't require, it doesn't require anything to be buried.
That's could be, just as it.
Yeah, so you do have, I mean, as Tim's saying, multi-family design standards and zoning ordinance, which terms of aesthetics, zoning's not for aesthetics, but we do have standards and they have some objective criteria like the length of the, uh, the garage door, that adjusted now and things of that nature, so. Planning commission review, although it just sort of references and then can bring in certain zoning concepts, I mean, they're primarily looking at some of those in the land development and the road to lay out the public infrastructure and everything else. Sort of like if they did a, were on to plan or here, they're not really looking at the end houses there because they've got their own systems and it'd be designed and everything. In terms of, you know, meeting setbacks and height requirements and things like that aren't really a, a planning commission concern because it's caught on building permits, it's a building permit, it's a zoning permit and building permit together. It's checked on the plans, there are inspections, and then as Tim was saying, at the end of it, it's an occupancy plan. We have had other developments, you know, a couple other ones in the Deerfield and, and other places that are, um, like, um, farming farms. You know, where something wasn't right between the building permit and the final occupancy, and have had to go, and sometimes it is an innocent mistake, they got, the Summerfield, that one house that quite innocent, but in a mistake, uh, or otherwise, and that's where the zoning hearing board is, and if, to Tim's point you know, because we can take a position in any zoning variance or otherwise request, we've got a stack of correspondence from Tim throughout saying, hey, what's going on with your grading? Hey, you gotta be higher in the back, you, you can't put a straight face going and say, oh, that was a mistake. You then have to establish a variance.
Who is first gonna be on site when that happens, the grading or the mistake in the grading?
Well, it's two different types, there's, there's site work and getting things ready, that is for a engineer and everything along those lines, by the end of the project, when they're going for occupancy, that's on Tim's department.
What is the goal to get to the point where?
We wanna catch it before, we don't wanna be doing it at the very end.
Well, you know, I, I mean, once they pour, once they pour the footing and start, start putting in the foundation walls, I, I mean, if it's not right, then it's not right.
And do we look at that before they go any further?
Yeah, we look at that, yeah, sure, so we're out there, we're out there in the footing, we're out there, you know, a- a- all the way through, but, you know, again, we could be told, we're gonna take care of that at the final, we're gonna take care of that with the final, final.
Do we have to agree with them that they're gonna take care of that with the final, because it gives them the opportunity to go in a different direction?
I mean, this, this, this is a hard thing, that, no, I, I don't think that anybody builds new construction in, 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 and puts it in an elevation that they should, I think that all these new offices are set way too low, um. In, in this case, that wouldn't help them at all, um, but, um, that it, it, it's almost gonna have to be, they're gonna have to do their final, final grading if, if they don't have a you know, if, if the slopes aren't ready for it.
Tim, you could, I mean, you can put on your building permit certain condition, you've done that.
Oh, I'm, I'm, believe me, I'll condition those too, but, you know, once they tell me they can't meet the mark, then what do you do?
It almost sounds like what, what, what Tom.
You show, look, we did it.
Which is certainly not what, from what we were envisioning when we did the ordinance, but I, I don't know, there's only one.
So cover up until it's in their like grade.
It's just not, no. No, I mean, they're they're just gonna have to fix the grade, I mean, you can do a lot with bringing in more dirt, um you know, how that's gonna look at the back end of the property, I don't know. You know, um I I'm not sure, you know, I envisioned this public sector to be to have a high end and a low end. Um but that's not, you know, what they're proposing as far as buildings, doesn't fit that criteria, so I'm not sure what we're gonna end up with.
It seems, just seems like we have, you know, I've been through a lot of building projects in 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 my career, mostly. Commercial, but it seems like you'd have a, should have an entire plan for the entire development. So you can see what these grades are and where the slopes are, and you're saying we can't.
Well, there there is a grading plan there, but but I, it it's. It doesn't really show you what you think.
No, it doesn't, doesn't show you whether they're gonna build, I'll call it two stories versus three, and if it's three, the plot of it has to be there. Fifty percent, you don't, from this, you don't even know. Units seventeen, what's that gonna be, we, and and they won't tell you, but they want you to approve to develop.
That doesn't sound right, do we have to do that legally now, because the planning commission came through and said they're okay with it, do we have to legally?
The commission is recommending both.
Okay, clear enough.
You need, well, so sorry, but to finish that thought, though, if you do deny a plan and. You need to provide, you know, a recent in writing with a citation to specific SALDO provisions. And if they are incorporating certain ordinance, zoning ordinance. Kind of address that as well, but you need to show them, uh say, this is the area that you, your plan, your revised plan doesn't meet. You know, this is why, and give them a reason, they can feel that.
You can also table it and and make them, make them show you. Yeah, you don't have to deny it, you can, you can say, you know, we're, we're not comfortable with what you're showing us, we'll do a better job. We don't tell them how to do it, they they need to, they need to figure that out.
My question that I'm definitely, and the plan and commission, we have, and we have tried that one, I think when they came back. And we got almost nothing, and so. I don't think that if we table them and ask them to and provide more information and whether they will, they will really do it or they will.
They don't, well, if they don't do it, then we can write it down.
Right, that's the thing, like, let's ask if we don't get what we need, then.
All right, well, we're two weeks away from that right now, is there something that we can go and meet with them and say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what's brewing?
Well, I I can call, I can call the developer and tell him of your concerns and ask him to have have his builder step up to the plate because. You know, we're not, I don't wanna deal with the builder because that's not just building the plant.
There's time in the development agreement.
And I mean.
Want to be in a situation where it goes down in flames because this didn't get done.
You know, and and there is, I I I'm detecting tension between the builder and the developer.
There we go.
So, um, and I'm not sure, you know. All that's playing out.
Tim, well, yeah, I I I get like the tension between builder and developer, so. I I guess from a borough's perspective, now just thinking of your building, came to a presentation, the builder and developer were definitely on the same page. You know, they answered all the questions, residents, the council, um renderings, presentation with all the details, so. Uh I I feel like we should ask, say, you know, this applicant, uh she was at a March meeting.
I I I've been asking and and I, you know, I.
Well, I think what we got now is some kind of concrete example of what the problem is, is we don't know what unit one and unit seventeen are in the whole big picture, whether they're two stories or three stories. Whether they got bumped down under the grade, right, we don't know any of that stuff, I need to know the big picture.
Come and present this and answer our questions.
Well, I think we need to figure out exactly what our questions are first.
Yep.
What are our concerns, Tim, you said you have concerns, and it's like, we have some concerns, maybe we need to get some. Particulate the list of what exactly we wanna know for them.
Well, you know, I I I would, I would like to be, I would like to have a better um. A better view of how they're, how they're gonna make everything fit as far as the foundations with fifty fifty. Matter, and and you know, as far as the design of it, you know, um. All that I can tell you is, you know, get into that section of the ordinance, of the of the ordinance and look at what the ordinance requires. And and see if it meets, you know, if their design meets your criteria and what, how you think the things are to be designed, because I mean that. All, there's a lot of good information in in that and and uh there's examples in there, although, you know. That may not be everybody's face, but you know, the ordinance was specifying that. You know, we don't want just to see a side of a building with a few windows in it, we want something that looks nice like the front. So usually we get a couple of different materials, and Spanish materials on the front, around the sides, you may get, you know, the stone, stone. The first core level and then everything else is siding with a few windows, and that's not very interesting. Um the organ says it should be interesting, you know, same interest as on the front, around the back, you know, everything is kinda. We don't even know because they're not even showing us what they're gonna do, they didn't even show us the options on on this one.
Laura, this is the person, it's it's in zoning, isn't it, like, there's pictures of sketches. And you can see the sketches, there's pages and pages of sketches.
Yeah, but we just need, if we're asking them something, need to be specific about what we're asking.
Yeah, and and here's the thing, I mean, everybody has their, everybody get their own specifics ready and question and then. Table it and tell them what you want, come back next month, we, you know, we don't have to have this at this meeting.
No, will you share with us what your, you think the deficiency was, from your perspective, like, you don't have to say right now, but if you have.
Let let me, let me just point out the sections of the ordinance that I think that are, that haven't been. About addressed as. And and I'll I'll forward all that information.
So the plan is, Dave, keep our agenda, council asks the questions, each of the council members asks the questions that are. Burned into your concerns are, and if you're not comfortable, we can table it and fall April, ask them come back with the details. That's never related.
I, Tim, I think you're, I mean, I need to speak for all of you, but I feel like you're better positioned. To come up with what the deficiencies are, what questions we should be asking them, we'll still do it, but you certainly have. More institutional knowledge than most of us, maybe not all of us, you know, I'll I'll give you some, I'll give you some talking.
Very good, that's what we're waiting for.
If you wanna, do we, do we know, you know, the type of developer?
I think we let the applicant come the way he is, and 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 that way you'll be prepared to ask the questions at the meeting. Before, and if you're not happy, or if you're not happy with his answers, you can say, you need to back the drawing board and get us this, or. We can approve it tonight if you want, then probably not looking good for you.
I mean, we want them prepared to have this as productive, they don't just show up and they are.
Well, the problem is, is that, I I mean, that, you know, you. There may be more questions than than even what I'm coming up with, and as you see the the presentation, you know. You don't, we don't want, I don't wanna say, you need to get us this so we can look at it and then he comes at the meeting, and then now you're asking for more even. Because he's gonna turn that right around on time, been there, done that already. So, yeah, look, look, look for in her presentation, ask me your questions, you're not happy with the answers, come back next month. And oh, by the way, uh you won't even need an extension of time. Well, I mean, I'll fire you, I'll fire you some stuff over email wise and they'll look at it.
With talking points and then fourth and outcome note to show up. Yeah, they typically do, right.
Some of these, it's a little measure that's on the body, it's not good, I guess I would just like a clear thing is, is there any that are gonna go. In other words, on a flat piece of land, front and back, basically flat, so you you, the garage is actually one of the floors. Is there gonna be any of those, or are they gonna fall? The what? Well, there can be, although they only build one floor above it.
Yeah, I don't, they they, they're not doing that.
Well, there's a picture of this.
There's a picture of, they're showing renderings of that with just a garage and one floor above. Yeah, that's why I'm confused, is every one of them gonna be a garage with two floors, like, with the garage buried? The only way.
They're they're not giving us, not good information. What I will do is I will let the developer know that there's going to be some questions, please, please have your people there.
That's, that'd be great.
We'll be there, show that one to own, so it's a demonstration of what it's done, what it is.
Uh, okay, nothing else we need to do? All right, sounds good, uh so of course we sat up this year's speaker, so for the first time.
Sure, I got our, and the written report is submitted, we have one executive session discussion item on potential property acquisition.
So I I submitted a report, um. Even though there weren't many, a lot of items on the report, there's a lot of effort that goes into the individual items. Um and in addition to that, I forwarded the twenty-four numbers um outside with the. Another copy of the um. Bank balances as a twelve thirty-one. Um to kind of let you know where we're at now, uh for pretty much. I I think we're pretty good through twenty-four, I mean, there might be something that the auditors come up with in terms of monitoring entry. That would be, I think, the only other I can see there, and I was just gonna mention also.
Along with my report, the only thing I wanted to mention is Luke asked about that, not everybody was here at the time, we're. Just wanna uh give a report on the salt, our salt conditions, uh pretty good right now, we still. Still have a little room in the shed there, we'll put some more in, we'll get a, just hope that we don't have too much more snow uh to get us through the rest of this winter and. Uh we've kind of given money on on salt this year, so, um other than that, um the yardway sites opened up. Anybody who is in permits, I think I mentioned in there, our total residents and permits here, so. Um and other than that, that's fine.
Actually, I've talked about it, but uh what I do wanna say is that the planning commission had a nice discussion. Their last meeting about overlay districts at major intersections, um. I gave them some homework to look at and uh hopefully, um we'll be talking about that in the future and maybe come up with something kinda. Kinda nice for the neighborhoods, that that was specified in our own plan and um.
Uh you have my report, uh the only thing to add is we did receive the shelter for the outdoor classroom at Acorn. We are hoping to do footers next week, um and then structure itself the following week, so within two, three weeks. The structure itself should be up, um and then we already have the benches, so we will just need to move them and place them down below. Um the only other thing is newsletter, which went to mailboxes today. They're in boxes, I know, I don't think everybody probably got them, but I know I did. Anything on the bridges, Ray? I'm gonna defer to Sean on that, uh and then Easter egg hunt, we'll start registration Friday. For residents, when the seventeenth for non-residents. That's all I have.
The same way. Between the the contractor and supplier, so they were originally shipped by supplier with no fascinants, a bolt. Bolts, connectors were sent then, or steel, they have to be US-produced steel, even if they're not US-produced steel, uh so they were rejected. The correct ones are now supposed to be here the fourteenth, so in a week and a half there. Um the bridge is sitting there, we need bolts, person to put it together. Once they come back in for the bridges, their intent, weather pending, is to finish the waterline connection, finish the last piece of paving and try to button it. So, um fingers crossed, knock on wood, if we get a superstation, you're gonna be right bolted at time and. Bridges get installed between end of March and. Um I think that's the big update of our report, new development items, Squire Ridge, Taylor Ridge, follow the maintenance bonds. Um you know, long reduction, Black Oak Office for the regular meeting and.
Uh congratulations, we're in order, we received our joint permit and NPS permit as well, um so that's. Been a long time. So, um that's big step, we still have some work to do there, but uh the only other item to mention is we're gonna start keeping an eye on Matterhorn. So we can get that seventy percent covered and get that wrapped up. We should be starting to season the grass grow pretty soon, so.
You guys all have a chief's report, and I have nothing to add.
Uh, sorry, Jim is on. Uh, sounds good. All right, have a good night, everyone.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's a, I I think that's either like a water box surround or something, just yeah, just. Yeah, if it comes loose, if you notice that again, we'll keep an eye on it, but uh somebody plans again, as it comes out, everyone wants, guys, so thank you.
Um. Thank you.
Came out of nowhere and frankly, generally something that's. Also at the local level, don't do is issue proclamations for them, because if you start doing that, you'll look like the Allegheny County Council. They start their meeting by issuing twenty proclamations.
The only exception being libraries are are good, because we are members of.
But the other stuff, you still wanna start a press. They do not make any policy decision that's going to drive anything.
They cause more problems.
People aren't paying attention to us.
Yes.
Honey, I'm down with it, that's all. Yeah.
Okay, um in this admission, we discussed previously, um near and dear to the mayor's heart, certainly. Dangerous crossing across Rochester Road for folks trying to get to Orchard Park, we have a sidewalk that just kind of leads to nowhere, um. I mean, just leaves it a road and then you're on your own.
It's burgerist.
Then on the other side, there's a sidewalk down here and you're on your own, um so Dennis and I met with Pendott, uh an engineer from Pendott. Uh to discuss uh whether this is something Pendott would consider. And um while it's not ideal, they would be okay with us extending our sidewalk all the way down to uh the existing sidewalk the other side of the street. Extending that sidewalk, putting it a crosswalk, putting in flashing signs on both sides at the crosswalk. And warning signs uh before the bend and then further up, letting people know. So if you're okay with that, um we can deal with our engineer and come up with that estimated cost for this. As well as to apply for H O P and for a signage permit from Pendott.
And do we have like squirreled away money for sidewalk or do we have to do something else?
Yeah, we spent all that. We, that that would just be something that would fall into our normal. Would have our own people do it probably, so it would just be part of our normal guys and the rogue crew having some time on their hands and. Yeah, and and Dennis and I had previously met with the property owner we have to talk with. Um, so the sidewalk at Orchard is gonna come down and then curve and then go down further in the right of way. It's not in the right way, uh. Where we've put it so far and then cross and the property owners that we have to go on the right of way. They're okay with that as long as we agree to maintain that sidewalk threat.
So that stuff, Pendott was talking about flashing, that's all stuff that calms the traffic because they're now coming up against like.
Yeah, we want this to be as as safe as we possibly can. And actually, the the signs they were talking about are signs that are uh, activated by pushing a button. So they're not flashing all the time, just if somebody wants to cross, they push the button and suddenly.
Now, now the car is now stuck having to stop because once you've got a flashing light on the crosswalk, it's a stop.
It, well. Practically, it's not apparently. Apparently, you still have to obey the rules of the road. You have to look both ways. If nobody's coming, then you can cross. You can't just. The button will assume you can walk into the crosswalk if the car's coming.
Okay.
So it, but it's gonna be safer than it is now.
Like, like, is this one of those where it says pedestrian? Stop. I I've seen him on like.
Pictures of people on the.
We we will do everything we can to make it as safe as we possibly can. And and what the uh, Pendott engineer recommended as well is the. Warning signs leading up to the crosswalk may be have a um, a speed detector on them with the flashing so that people see it. And slow down knowing that there's a pedestrian crossing coming. So anyway, it's something that sounds like Pendott will approve if we.
And we can apply for a grant for this type of like reconstruction type thing.
Only if you want to do it two years from now. However. We have local share, we have to have that discussion. We have five hundred thousand dollar local share grant for the. Destination of the Public Works Building, which is a project that's over two million dollars and we simply can't afford. So we're considering going back to our, to the folks at LSA with support of our elected officials, state elected officials. Say, can we use this money instead for, for example, that crosswalk? Um, bridges on our trails in Blueberry Hill Park. We have three bridges we need to install. Um, and some of it toward upgrades to playgrounds. And see if they would be willing to let us reallocate that money. They may not, they may say, no, just give it back. But we haven't got it.
I think as long as the plans you have are incredibly specific.
I I I.
Yeah, where you're in the right of way or otherwise.
I I think we might be able to reallocate that eight million dollars and we'll at least try because we want to try to get this crosswalk down this year.
Or raise the civilian rental for Old Orchard to a million dollars. They have a birthday party.
The the signs are probably fifteen hundred dollars a piece. They're not huge. Again, the the sidewalk itself, we think our guys can install the crosswalk is just painting. So it's not a really expensive project. Probably costs more for an engineer than the project.
So what about the um, other parks? If if we can install a payment system and to other parks?
If we have the crosswalks, other parks, we can consider that. It's just, I mean, for example, um, Blueberry Hill Park, there's no crosswalk anymore.
And there's really nobody's doing.
There's less foot traffic going into the other.
People aren't walking along Rochester Road and Blueberry Hill Park and then suddenly running across them.
But the folks that live in the community right across from that park, man, they want to cross that road all the time and the kids don't know.
And in Libro, again, we don't have people walking along this weekly. Suddenly crossing, they're driving.
Averational park for us to wait.
Yes, exactly.
What's the, uh, is that can break my drive?
And that's not an ideal location. We talked about, well, can we run the sidewalk on that, on the Grandin Town side of the road? Up Rochester, but there's a sanitary sewer line in the right of way there. So it it just wouldn't work. It would be a little bit safer, but.
It's it's actually better, I think, right where we're.
It's better just to cross Grandin Town and extend our side.
Then the homeowner there that needed permission to.
That's great.
Down in the sidewalk.
We have, I think, we still have to move the mailbox.
We, yeah, we'd have to move the mailbox.
That's great. If we can reallocate that money, those are all good projects that people can actually. Public Works Building is.
That's why I'm hoping with the support of our state like officials, we can.
Yeah, we could do a lot for that.
I think that grant expires mid twenty twenty six.
Alright, okay, so the next topic is our home rule update. The reason I made it fifteen minutes, um, in case we want to. Order sessions sort of on this, uh, and talk about it. Uh, also, I didn't want to hold staff up for this unnecessarily. Anyway, so we love that I stopped off. We talked, we had some questions, um, is there F A Q? We want to get on my site that's on there? Or maybe definitely. Uh, shopping. Do we want to like look it up, review it or anything or?
I just took this, I mean, we actually got the paper to change. Still on the briefcase, still two and a half actually. When you get your. Well, I think that's good. I know Max had some of the dates in our package, like August, early August thirteen each prior.
Be aiming for July, bringing a meeting.
Yeah, we're trying to put together five commissioners, that's the first.
And I I think we already have.
I I started forwarding names, so.
Our stormwater engineer Brad is interested.
Yes, so he's great. I'm like the best chair ever.
We just got another one that I gave it forward along and then we had one other woman reach out to me last year and say she's interested, so we.
Somebody on the hook. Also, I'll send a name to you. That's fine, that was simple. I have another lady that I'm. Got three kids, the time commitment is gonna be a lot, but I'm trying to get her. Oh, good.
We've learned for this.
Yeah, yeah. We we talked about a postcard for the survey for wireless infrastructure and possibly playing. Not only a QR code for the wireless infrastructure survey, but also a QR code to go to our website alone about, learn about Home Rule.
Yeah.
Um, and that's that's a postcard we'll want to be getting together in the next couple of weeks.
That's really good.
So if all all residents have like some comments and what you're able to just like, you know, and the how many students.
We're we're not setting it up so they can go on our website and add comments. This is to give them information on Home Rule. We're, I don't think we're asking right now for people to tell us whether they want to do it or not. We're just looking for.
They're gonna get to, they'll get to, you know.
The surveys don't get to fill out for the infrastructure, but Home Rule, I don't think they're looking for.
The whole purpose is to educate people and 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 have them understand the purpose of the Home Rule Charter. And um, and then to have them, you know, hopefully, put, throw their support behind it because it's really good for the community.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking just like, well, maybe some residents may have someone that, you know. Want to provide some feedback or comments and that we can, we look into that and.
They they should provide news to the committee then.
Yeah, there's gonna be a.
The council's not gonna make a decision on whether you go on roll or not. If they come to council and say this is what you, we think should do.
I don't think that I'm talking about the council, I'm talking about like this, whether we should provide something like this. Just like, let let, you know, and the people, you know, make make some comments if they know.
I'll let the council do.
Make comments with the council meeting.
I mean, I I do think of of. Public hearings, that's not right, what I'm looking for, uh, information session is not a bad idea, especially. Maybe a little closer to summertime, as people, as we, as we've got more information out, people know this is happening.
Yeah.
Just, there will be some questions and I think that might be a good idea for us to address that before it goes on the ballot.
Because the education is kind of like a tool, because we want to educate the public, but at the same time, you know, public may have some like. Comments and they they want us like. To provide a little bit more information, definitely in order to, um, you know, and better understand, you know, what is the situation. Yes, and we definitely would like to and move forward and with. With this and so, you know.
Are you thinking about like answering questions from them or are you imagining them just submitting basically their opinion?
Yeah, submitting their opinion.
Oh, well, they can do that at the ballot, right? When it's time to vote.
But do you think that that would be the two days time before?
Well, I think an information session so they can learn more about it. And if you want people to understand it, we also need people to. Want to want to search, get a hundred and sixty five signatures and and commit the time and. Yeah. And we should probably, we should probably put together a little schedule because we, do we know, Max, I know we got the August dates.
Uh, backwards from that, yeah.
Do we know when the circulation of petitions would begin and that?
The dates are in there, I'll know one of the questions, but. There's a two week period there.
So we have, so so we have the dates for all that as well.
But I think maybe like early summer, we could have maybe an information session or.
Yeah, they can come and ask questions there or 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 provide their comment. That's fine too. It should be an open forum. I mean, it should be a, a two-way dialogue, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is what I feel new because then, uh, we we also want to make the ten minute talks what we need to, you know.
Before we have potential commissioners, uh.
Yeah, because, yeah. It's similar, similar, like I think with the thriving. Like never, there was no.
Lots of public forums.
Public forum, right?
Yeah, but that Max was gonna say, do you have PKSD from those? Like, is this something?
It's my um, uh, Zoom background. Today, we're talking about another contentious meeting in a nineteen eighty-three action.
Do you feel like that's a good idea or necessary?
I mean, you're gonna introduce the ordinance, it's gonna look like it is before. Um, you can have. An information session, you can set up some time, you know, in June, July meetings, you know, based around, you know, at a regular meeting. Uh, the introduction of the ordinance in June, you know, vote on it in July, four and more of a. I won't say dog pummy show, but more of an explanation of what this all means and sort of. Last time we had a lot of discussions in here, you know, it was introduced, uh, voted on. Field pretty quickly. There's nothing to say, you can't have a mini public hearing or more explanation or anything else. Public meetings aside from something set up separately.
Advertised and all, just like everything else, right?
Kind of like, then like the, you know, like the cable, um, sort of public hearings, uh, Tom was the only one that commented on and the MS four. Outreach public hearings. I don't know if you'll feel the real life. Well, past development, those were required because of the ordinance changes.
Well, in a way, that would be advantageous because that means more more people are informed about it, more people in the community are interested and engaged already. I mean, that would be, but we also are planning on the festival, right? Hitting people up at the festival with this information too, right?
You know, but how many people are actually gonna reach the back floor? I mean, there's a lot of people there, I'm not actually coming to.
I got four of my friends silent, just because they're being nice.
Well, I think there should be T-shirts and stuff, saying Home World Charter. Or maybe the kids can make their own shirts at a booth, Home World Charter.
Yeah, I I think like that, though, whatever you want to call it, like just that forum, uh, at the June regular meeting. I really like to carve out time. You're you're in charge of your own agenda. Uh, so the regular meeting would be like in and out of. I mean, we can even do like a, yeah, we have preliminary matters, we're swearing police officers or head of the library. Charter explanation.
They would still have to wait around for like the meeting for it. If you put it right, you just front load it.
Yep.
Here's, you know, fifteen minutes or twenty minutes on.
And you can just introduce it at the end of it, it's not even a potion. Uh, yeah, I'd actually line up because that's supposed to be later, ten days later. Uh, people watch, you show up to the burrows and and ask questions. The same information can be there, you know, just answer questions.
What's tricky about this is you can't. Give like a concrete answer because you're not deciding what's gonna happen. You're just saying that you'd like to consider going home rule and then you're gonna. Have people vote on a committee that is going to make a recommendation. So you can't say to people, well, this is what will happen when we go on rule, since you don't know.
All you can really do is say, these are the working parts of what a home rule charter does and we're investigating that.
Disadvantages.
Yeah, we're, yeah, as as, you know, as the, as the government leaders were interested in this, you know, real estate transfer tax component of it.
Some people may not say, oh, you just want to raise taxes.
Yeah, right.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
And that's what I would concern. I mean, I think that's, that's fair to come and say that, but I think that's. Part of our responsibility that we're listening to that.
Do we know if this goes forward? Do we know? Commission's born, then you have the elections and now we're ready to get on to working on it. Do we know if we're gonna bring in a consultant to guide the commission? I know you had a ridiculous expensive proposal to do that.
I think that.
I'll do it.
Exactly what you know. Yeah.
I don't think you can figure it out.
Just the mechanics of putting it together, the uh, the clerical work associated with. Piling all the recommendations, I mean, there's gonna be, there's gonna be some.
Yeah, I mean, I quote it as a hundred thousand dollars for that.
I I think, I think a little bit of teeter on there, um. You you probably want to have someone who's really a former. Knows that for project management works the way, not just you, Tom, but I don't get on person as well, um, because, yeah. There's recaps there, right? There's some minutes kept. Um, and then a slide deck at the end, which I. Uh, happy to help with that too. But I know there are a lot of people who are thinking of helping that wheel. Uh, they have a diverse body that has these functions as like their, you know, their actual experience. It's really guiding through.
When the commission gets to that point, if, obviously, when we form the commission and they get to that point where they're working on a charter. If they come to a point where they're like, we need help, we need some guidance. Surely we can reach out if we need.
Yeah, he offered, I've certainly not on a full-time basis, but I think if we get hung up on a particular area or something.
We'd like to offer some direction.
Another reason, if they're gonna have the commission struggle over the, over those types of things. Now we need actually put together what we would propose to be the charter. And, you know, you're gonna need somebody to organize that.
Yeah, and you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
We saw when it was like ten pages or something, right? Yeah, and we, ours is.
If there aren't gonna be major changes, the government's struggling.
Right, that's what what we're, what we're envisioning is that the commission goes and does what we're hoping to accomplish with it and and. Not go off on a tangent where no voter's gonna read it.
So we are not fixed on the number of, um, uh, number of members of the commission, right? We can do seven, we can do nine or.
Ordinance, you have to specify. So we had picked seven the first time around, so you could just get seven, nine or eleven.
And you, Max, instead of, if we don't get seven elected, we can appoint.
Well, I don't think we do. I think they do. Get four, they give a forum and and they they could.
I think seven seems a good one, I'm.
The people I've talked, yeah. I talked to, expressed, you know, what if they come up with something we don't like? Well, then we, you still have, you still have to vote on it later on. Yeah, but I think like if you've got people on, that that are, that that have some understanding of where this is supposed to. I think you'll come up with something that's what it's supposed to be. It's just gonna get dumped, right? And nobody wants that. Nobody wants to put all that time and effort in. No. That's the other thing, because you have some idea, you have some vision of where it needs to go. You're gonna be able to contain the project itself. It's not gonna go to some crazy like.
Your particular.
Yeah, that consulting firm that we met with, I mean, I my feeling is yes, they've done it, but they're mainly having a project manager. And they've been facilitating, uh, kind of doing self-correcting is. One of those saves a really ton of money. Obviously, I have no idea how those. Burrows.
The statute is what you have to do, right? The statute takes what you have to do, right, Max? The statute tells the commissioners what they have to do as they sit in the room.
It gives them a time period and it says how you set up. You know, how many you're supposed to meet at least once a month.
Is there a set time and I'm sorry for maybe you can ask it up there. Is there a set time if they have to pass the petitions beginning to end?
That's the nomination papers, yes.
It's a little long, yeah.
It's longer than petitions.
And that's the problem. I mean, the elections uh department, when they have the elections calendar and they have nomination petitions and nomination papers. I haven't seen like an asterisk or anything says Homeworld Charter is, you know, do this, that's sort of. The timing in the home rule after plan law matches the nomination paper timeline in terms of thirteen.
We don't know what that is.
You you count backwards from the general election date in our case.
Isn't it three weeks?
Something like that.
So it's like the August fifth, I think it's the twenty.
And it's not based on words or district.
Can you have the nomination papers sitting at like, for instance, the 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 council meetings? And tell people that they can come in and sign.
I believe it's the same probably restriction that, yeah, yeah.
Somebody has to be there that presented the.
Yeah, but you don't have to check me. And I don't think there's any, well, I mean, who's gonna challenge these things, but.
So.
I don't think if you sign somebody's nomination petition, even because it's, yeah, no, it's completely separate. It's not like. Two different parties and signing somebody else's petition.
You put seven signatures on and who's?
Yeah, one more, one more piece of that. One more piece of that. Okay, because now you have seven people that circulated. Can one person sign all the seven petitions?
Yeah, oh, no, that's like any other, whatever open number of spots there are, you as the as the voter gets. Those seven spots to put wherever you want. There could be fourteen people running. You only get to put your signature on seven of those nomination papers.
Okay, what more I'm saying is one one individual like you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Actually, Brian, you should be able to sign those fourteen papers, right?
Just be careful in the picture. It's like. People running for jobs, there was only like a nine spot. People were signing twenty petitions, thirty petitions. Especially some of the government leaders that weren't interested in like favoring one over another. They you could have. You know, twenty, thirty.
Challenge process. Okay, so we we good on this?
Definitely. I mean, I think we'll still talk about June, what type of freezing day, you know, yeah, we're gonna all study up. Back of, you know, Brian had circulated at least the book. But to be able to handle those questions creatively about nomination papers, know the exact number, those are the dates. You know, really, it's focused, gotta be in that first step because the brief says we don't know what happens.
And you don't want to overwhelm somebody who's volunteering. So you want to say, look, this is this is how it works, you know, somebody walked around with the seven petitions or whatever and.
Alright, so yeah, target or June, we're gonna be on have a presentation. He's the first festival to have a link again. Uh okay, well, it sounds good. Uh okay, so any reports from?
No, nothing.
Nothing.
I got one. Just to refresh, I I actually have the mayor's monarch butterfly pledge.
Which is not a product.
But people are aware of that, so I was approached by the uh creation committee at Saint John Newey. And uh they have a pollinator garden and uh they need some help. Uh they don't quite understand all of the elements of uh, you know, what they need to do and especially with the uh with the uh. Monarch butterfly and so forth and so on. So long story short. Um they asked me to come and educate them, so. I need to do the pledge. But uh no, we have uh Letty Savage who's on our E A C. And uh so that was Regis' help. Uh we connected with her last night. We did a uh a one hour. Meeting with them and went really, really well. Letty is uh extremely intelligent on all these subjects. She knows what came to plan just looking at the dirt. So anyway, we uh it's a very lovely meeting, so we did that last night, so something that's uh went really well with the community. Thank you.
Um as usual, I have a couple of things, three though. Um again, I just said thanks to Gary too. He fixed a hole in our road very quickly. That a resident had told me about, so um. The resident tried to give me credit. I was just not paying credit. I did, you were a workup. It would not have turned out well for anyone. Uh National Library Week, are we, I say we're putting that on our socials and. The website or whatever else. And the same thing, are we planning to put something on our searches for um? The time change and smoke detectors.
We probably haven't done so, but but we should. I I know. I know in McCandless they do that, but they have a farm marshal as one of our staff. Here and that's why they. Sure, we can add.
And carbon dioxide, right?
Uh yeah, the only thing I have, uh you know, it's going up there, so. Gonna be talking to. These three N A classes about, they have eighty eighty environmental sciences in the class, so. They very interested in learning about stormwater, uh so biodiversity and erosion and all that stuff are there. We'll use some of our material. Powerpoint template. Yeah, but but going along with this uh smoke detector, um yeah. It may not be that easy to people like. Have something like some, prepare something probably like a longevity detector, a ten year thing. Uh I I have a few. Most people have no clue. Someone walking twenty years old, spring regis like fifteen now. I mine are fifteen years old. I.
They have stickers on them now, I would say. Here's Ted and they have a date. A lot of them wanted to be for some somehow.
Funny that you said that because there was a couple of years back, there was a lot of research on like. Children sleeping through such factors, but waking up if they had their parents' voice on there. Your parents' voice, but a voice at all. In my place, it's slippers, but the vendors never.
And if it's easy to like. If they're wired, hardwired in, it's easy to like just pull it. I mean, that should be much easier for like the homeowner to do. Maybe maybe it'll get more people to see this, but. Yeah.